So I want to welcome all the District 3 City Council Representatives. It's great to have you all here today. All of you are here for the March 1st ballot for City Council 3. It's great to have all of you here. The format for today is going to be a two-minute opening, followed by a one-minute answer to each question. There are 10 questions planned, plus a one-minute closing. We will use an alternate basis today, so we will... Each question and each person will be alternated, so that the same person isn't going first nor last throughout the process. Okay? So with that, I want to officially again welcome you all here, and we'll get started with the opening right away. And we'll stop... We'll start right out of here with... We're gonna start with Bob Tyler.
Hey, well, thank you, Jerry, and I appreciate the invitation to be here today. I appreciate the chamber and all the great work you all do, and I want to say hello to the opponents that are running against me. My name's Bob Tyler. I'm running for City Council, District 3. I've lived in Rio Rancho approximately for two decades. During that time, I'm a retired law enforcement officer. I've been a firefighter. I've been in the military, served for, let's see, about 20 years. And I have great community involvement. For my time here in Rio Rancho, I was a high school baseball coach at Cleveland High School for the last 11 years and decided to stop when my son was playing. But prior to that, I started coaching high school and college athletics from 1996. Why am I running? You know, I'm running to continue the progress of Rio Rancho and the work that we've been doing. You know, it's really important to understand that we've made great strides, and where we've come from is amazing. We've done a great job. We have a great partnership with the community. We have a great working ethic with all of our staff, and I just want to keep moving Rio Rancho forward and keep the progress going and keep the community involved. There's a lot of needs that the community has, and there's a lot of things that we still have to work hard to improve. I know that. Nothing's perfect. No one's perfect. No city's perfect. But there's a lot of things that we still have to move forward on, and I'm willing to take on that challenge and make sure we keep moving forward and keep working together as a partnership with the community and the community's trust to move us forward. So again, thank you very much for allowing me the time, and I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Excellent. Thank you again. I'd like to reiterate those same things. It's nice to see that those candidates, they're actually throwing their hat in the ring. One of the hardest things you'll ever do in life is probably do that very thing. And another thing, thank you to the chamber for allowing this forum to meet, so that we have the opportunity to speak to the people that we may not see every day. It's really nice to have this opportunity to get out there and put it out on multiple forums through different Facebook or whatever the case may be, Youtubes and everything else that you guys utilize. But, you know, why run for office? You know, you think, why did I throw my hat in the ring on this? And I've lived in New Mexico my whole life, except for time spent in the military. I served in three different areas while I was in the military: Hawaii, the United Kingdom, and right here at Kirtland Air Force Base. It gave me a wide variety of people to actually work with and see the challenges of each community, each dynamic person that you come in contact with. So we try to do that in the military, try to work with everyone for sure, and that's kind of what I want to do here in this position. I've worked for... Ha! Got thrown off a little bit. My name is Clyde Ward, and I'm running for District 3. So I think I, you know, I bring a lot of experience to this. My experience started out in the military, and then when I got out, I actually sold real estate for nine years and then went to work in the assessor's office. From the assessor's office, I was appointed to the... As deputy assessor for San Juan County, and then served as an elected assessor in San Juan County for five years until I was appointed to the New Mexico State Land Office. Stayed there for four years, and now I work as the deputy assessor in Burnleyo County. And I just want to say that I think that well-rounded experience is what I bring to this race, and I think that people want government to be engaged with them, and I hope to bring that very thing as an engagement to the public and to work with them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, our next candidate.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you for everyone who's watching and tuning into this forum. I want to thank Mr. Jerry Shallow in the Rio Rancho Chamber of Commerce for giving us this opportunity to share our vision, and thank you to these fine gentlemen up here for serving our country. I believe each one of us have served in the armed forces, so thank each one of you gentlemen. Just to introduce myself, my name is Joshua Jones. I'm a retired military air force veteran for eleven and a half years. I'm a fellow law enforcement officer. I'm a small business owner, and I live right here in the city of Rio Rancho with my beautiful family. I recently had the opportunity to work for and with now Madam Secretary of Department of Interior, Deb Hallin, and we had the opportunity to work directly with constituents and stakeholders across this incredible state. I believe strongly in public service, and that's why I'm running to be your next city councillor. You know, I think there's no secret that we have some work to do here in District 3 and the city of Rio Rancho. And as I've knocked on doors and some of the residents here in District 3, they've exclaimed to me that, you know, we need stronger economic development, and this means incentivizing small businesses to build, to grow, and to expand right here in the city of Rio Rancho. I'm ready to take on the infrastructure needs by rebuilding and investing in roads such as Pasel de Volcan and go after federal funds as far as infrastructure funding and grants to be able to build out that structure. I'm ready to help grow a well-qualified workforce here in the city, and so I want to invest in after-school programs and make sure that our kids are safe. Let's invest in new community senators and multi-generational senators to help everyone stay active and involved. And finally, as we grow Rio Rancho in the right ways, I'm ready to lead with my law enforcement background to ensure that we have a good city moving forward. Thank you. My name is Joshua Jones. I'm running for City Council, District 3.
Okay, thank you. So very first question goes right to Clyde. Right?
Welcome.
Luck of the draw. As city councillor, how would you engage the community? What's your availability for meetings from 8 o'clock in the morning to 8:00 P.M.?
For me, I would say that's one of the main reasons that I've actually took, you know, this opportunity to run for office, is because that is what is missing in this area, is where the community does not feel engaged with the elected officials. So many times, you're knocking the doors, and they... I think there's just that expression of dissatisfaction, and they really don't know how to express that. I plan on being available. I want to open up more community opportunities for people to meet with myself in District 3 and in Rio Rancho. We need to open this up. The government has a distrust to it that we have to overcome right now, and I think that is critical, that I have to be available to the citizens. And you have to do that as part of being a good qualified candidate, is you need to be available and work with people and listen to them. I think that's what is... One of the things that is really missing is that opportunity for the public to speak to you, and I just want to say that thank you for that.
Joshua?
Great question. Thank you for that. So with me being a small business owner, I have a lot of flexibility. I'll be able to attend meetings as necessary to meet with the people and the constituents of Rio Rancho. I think it's very important that we have engagement with the people within our district, and I would be willing to... Well, let me step back and say this. In the office that I work for, one of the things that we had that was outstanding, I believe, was transparency and being able to connect with constituents. And in my plan, what I would do to ensure that I was engaged, to ensure that people are being heard, is to make sure that we have quarterly listening sessions to check in with the people and within the district, to get suggestions, hear what they have to say, and then implement that into decisions that I make.
Thank you. Bob?
Thanks, Jerry. You know, I live in the district, in District 3. I've been up there, like I said, for the last 20 years approximately, and I work from home. And in working from home, it gives me the flexibility to go out, and when the constituents call, to go and meet with them and work with them and try to engage with them in solving any of the concerns or problems they have. You know, one of the really great opportunities we're gonna have, we're gonna build that community and life center down there in Rio Rancho, down in Enchanted Hills Plaza. And the really great thing about that is, is that's gonna allow me another location where I can meet with the citizens and have meetings with them and be available, like if you would say, in office hours, and it really would allow, afford me that opportunity. You know, some of the other things around my work, I have flexible hours. I've purchased time off because I've learned in government now that you have to purchase your time off because you have to be off the clock when you're doing a lot of city work. So again, I'm gonna be available, flexible, and ready to answer the community's needs as always.
Great, thank you. Second question goes to Joshua. So what would be your approach to work with other city councillors to ensure Rio Rancho moves forward in the next four years?
Thank you so much for that question. I think that collaboration is key. I understand that not everyone is gonna agree on how to move forward, but I think the answer is always somewhere in the middle. So I think if everyone is willing, and I am willing, to sit down, have a conversation, figure out what is best for Rio Rancho, and figure out how we move forward with different ideas, and implement whatever the solution is at the end of our discussion. I'm a collaborator. I make sure that I try to find ways to work with someone instead of against someone. And I think, again, ideas when they come to the table aren't fully polished, but through communication, we can make sure that we have a finished and polished product to be able to implement.
Okay, thank you. Bob, same question.
You know, I've had the benefit of working with the current council for the last, almost going on four years now, and I will tell you that it's an amazing group of people. It's a diverse group of people, and it's a group of people who take their job very, very seriously. And working with them is... It's enjoyable, and I will tell you, reaching across and seeing everyone's different ideas, and you really have to work with everyone's needs in their specific districts. You know, District 3 has specific needs, but District 5 is trying to take care of District 5. So you have to kind of reach across the aisle, so to speak, and make sure that they know what your needs are and express that in a way that they can come up and we can work on, plan on how to best utilize money, resources, or whatever it is, to service the District 3. So it's a lot of compromise, and it's a lot... And Josh pointed out very well, it's a lot of working together, and it's a lot of collaboration. I will tell you, you have a strong government group of people up there. You have a lot of people that are very committed and take the job seriously, and I will tell you, it's an enjoyable thing to work with that group, and I've done it well, and I'll continue to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Clyde, the same question.
I like going last a lot better. I like to say that. It is... It's all about communication, and I think that's one of the key elements of any successful operation, is communication. Hand in hand, though, with communication has to go to respect. And if somebody's in disagreement with some person, and you have respect there, you can actually see both sides of that. Is it really always written in stone? No. Can we change the way our ordinances run, or can we change the way we do business to benefit the common good? Of course, but you have to have respect for those ideas. You have to have respect for each other, and you have to be able to communicate, and I think that is a critical element as we move forward in any life situations, is we have to be ready to do that, and we have to be ready to listen with an open mind and not just be so closed-minded as to, well, we want this, and this is the goal, and we have to move in that direction. Everything else has an open side to it, and I think that's the most important part, is to have that, communication and respect. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so moving on to the third question. Bob, this one is for you. What do you think the biggest challenges are gonna be for Rio Rancho over the next four years?
So we have a lot of challenges, and I don't think there's just one. I think there's several, and a lot of them are, and I'll go right to it, roads. We know roads is a huge challenge for us. We know getting the GRT going is another huge challenge, getting that economic development, building a strong economic sector. To small businesses, it's all challenging because of the... What's going on in the environment with COVID and everything else. A lot of things have changed in the environment. We have a lot of challenges. But the really good part is, is the city of Rio Rancho is in a great financial position to work with businesses, work with folks that want to bring business here, and develop that and get them set up. The other challenge is roads, and when I say roads, we have a... And we're gonna talk about that, I'm sure, later on. But roads is a huge challenge for us, and ensuring that we do the things that are needed to do with infrastructure and roads is gonna be important. So thank you.
Thank you. Clyde, you're up.
Okay. Yes, the challenges, and with any municipality, any city, I think those are the challenges that they all face. It's roads, revenue, economic development. You know, another thing is crime, sprawl, however else we want to call it, where we're growing faster than we really have sense to do. And I think that's an important factor here, is that we have to look at all of those things together, because are we growing more houses than we are jobs? Are we growing more crime because of the expansion of people coming into our area? And these are all things that I think are a challenge for every city and that have to be addressed by the governing body. Roads, of course, is, you know, just a critical element, because that's how everybody gets around, and that's how we move throughout the city. But it's the infrastructure that goes underneath it. Does the development make sense? Does it... Are pieces in place for infrastructure? So I think those are challenges that we all face and that we must take a solid look at. Thank you.
Thank you. Joshua, same question.
So I think the challenges that we're gonna face over the next four years, and I think most of these gentlemen talked about it or touched on it, roads and infrastructure is one of the biggest things that I've heard from the constituents, especially going around and canvassing. You know, I know Pasel de Volcan is a huge mechanism that can create economic growth and expansion here in Rio Rancho. Right now, we have the availability... There are funds right now that we can go after that will be depleted and no longer being able to go after with the infrastructure bill. There are billions of dollars right now that... And grants and funding that we can go after and ensure that our roads are done, that Pasel de Volcan is built out, and any other infrastructure sewers, whatever. And there's money out there to be had, small businesses. We have an opportunity to bring in green initiatives and be selective in the businesses that we bring that represent Rio Rancho as a community. Thank you.
Thank you. And next question goes to Clyde. So let's strictly look at District 3. What are some infrastructure priorities that you foresee District 3 really needs to move forward over the next four years?
You know, in District 3, it's a fairly new community as far as roads and infrastructure like that, but we have a lot of new homes going in. We have a lot of... A lot of new homes going in. There's a... You know, we focus a lot on that, but there are road issues, and we would need to do that. The infrastructure needs to be able to support the homes we are adding in and those families that are coming in, and part of that is water, sewer. Those rates are climbing up, and we need to be efficient in that infrastructure as well. What's the water and sewer going to look like as far as the infrastructure for District 3? And that applies to the whole city, I realize, but that is always important to all, everybody, is how those rates are climbing up, and do we have a safe water supply that will continue throughout the years and the direction that we're moving with that. I think those are things that we have to be really paying attention to in those, in that degree of infrastructure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Joshua, next question. Same question, shall I?
Can I get the question again, sir?
No.
No? No? Okay.
What specifically we're looking at District 3, what are some infrastructure priorities for that district?
Sure. You know, as you're out, you're talking to the community, and you're canvassing, and you're speaking with the people. As we all know, roads are an issue. You know, I was talking with an elderly lady in our community not too long ago, actually it was last week, and she was telling me that, you know, the street light has been out for the last three years. And I think that, you know, that's something small within our infrastructure that we should be able to take care of and make sure that our streets are night dark, and, you know, she's really concerned about children playing and cars coming around that bend and being hit. So, you know, taking care of the small things of the old infrastructure that's already in place. You know, when you're talking about economic development, you talk about spec buildings being built out. If we can make sure that we have a plan for Civic Plaza, what that's gonna look like if it's a destination area, you know, I think that would be something to consider.
Okay, thank you. Bob, same question.
So being up there, like I said, for a long time, I've seen a lot of the different growth that's happened up in Enchanted Hills more specifically, but I've also been following a lot that's been going on in Mariposa. And I think everyone's touched on it, right? The roads are definitely an impact. I mean, there's no secret there. But what's underneath the roads is something that a lot of people don't understand, is there's deteriorating lines in some of the older parts of Enchanted Hills. There's things that need to be repaired, and I think Clyde hit it on the head when he said, you know, we need to control the growth and how we grow, because smart growth really will help us have a great infrastructure. And one of the biggest problems, and we have a lot of things going on out there, so as we're growing all these new homes that are going underneath PDB, we're gonna need to have some type of traffic control put up on Enchanted Hills Boulevard, because that new exit is gonna exit right onto Enchanted Hills Boulevard. When 550 closes down, 550 now becomes... Or Enchanted Hills becomes the new 550 when it's closed for accidents. We have to have a good traffic flow, a good pattern. Infrastructure development is very important, and when we start to look at... Sorry. All right. Infrastructure. I can go on for a second. Sorry.
All right, so our fifth question, this goes to Joshua first. So, Rio Rancho has one of the lowest budgets per capita of any city, town, or village in the state of New Mexico. That being said, we have a number of demands, as you guys have mentioned. Each of you has mentioned that roads, services, infrastructure. Do you foresee any reason to increase or an opportunity to increase taxes in the city of Rio Rancho to solve these service needs? Joshua, this one's yours first.
Absolutely. Thanks so much for the question. I'm just writing down a few key points here. So lowest budget, I'm very aware of that. I know some of our neighboring cities have doubled what our budget is here in Rio Rancho. I think before we start increasing taxes, I think we look at alternative ways to bring in revenue to the city of Rio Rancho. For example, one of the things that we can look at, and I know that I've talked about it before, but the Build Back Better, the infrastructure bill, there are grants, and there is funding out there right now that will cover the course of the next four to five years. And just for example, one of our neighboring cities is building a coalition to build out development, and what they've done is they've applied for the VBD grant. They've already had phase one. They've already been awarded $500,000. Over the next two phases, they will be awarded over $100 million for projects for economic development. So these are a few things that we can do to offset the budget that we currently have.
Okay, thank you. Bob, same question.
Jerry, you and I, and all of us in this room, know that we have budget challenges. If you look at the size of Rio Rancho, we have 100, roughly over 100,000 folks that live here, and we have roughly over, what, 107 square miles of mass. If you take our city compared to the size of, say, Farmington, Farmington is probably 30 miles, and they have double our budget, if not almost triple our budget. And they have just as many pools on them, but the one thing they have is they have the GRT, they have the business. We don't have it. It goes down the hill. As far as the question on raising taxes, I'm not for raising taxes. I just believe that there's always other ways to solve some of our problems, and it's getting creative with permanent funds. It's getting creative with a lot of ways that we spend our money, it's being fiscally conservative, and making sure that we spend money where we need to, and we tighten up our bootstraps, and we do the right things. Raising taxes, if we're gonna have a tax increase on our citizens, it should come from the citizens agreeing to that as needing to be done. We're not... I don't think the governing body should just do it.
Thank you. Clyde, same question.
You know, I have to be in agreement with Bob in regards to this in some category here, as that it's a GRT difference between here and Farmington. Coming from Farmington, spent many years there and grew up there, there is a lot more GRT there. There's oil and gas revenues that are there. They have a wide variety of things that we do not, but we have the opportunity to bring businesses to Rio Rancho, to increase GRT, to increase property situations. And I call it a situation because a business may come into us, and we need to incentivize them to be there, so we create that situation that says, hey, they want to come to us, and then from that benefit, we can do other advantages to them. Another thing that I look at is we just changed our reserve amount of how much money's in reserve, and if that's the case, and our budget's really that tight, you know, maybe we need to tweak and put some money back in the streets, back to the people that we do currently have. So we know we have a tight budget, and we need to correct that, and taxes is not the answer.
Okay, thank you. All right, Bob, the next question is going to you. So Rio Rancho has been experiencing faster growth than Albuquerque. On the other side of this, though, jobs have not kept pace with the residential growth. We have one job per eight residents, working residents, today. That being said, what ideas do you have to increase the amount of jobs in Rio Rancho over the next four years?
Well, that's interesting. What we need to do is we need to encourage small business and large business holders to come to Rio Rancho. And you and I, and everyone in this room, know how difficult that is, because to get businesses to come here, to be able to survive, they need to have a residence, they need to have the revenue coming through the door. A business just isn't gonna go to a city and say, I'm gonna plop in and have a business here, unless they know they can be successful. So we have to encourage folks and let them know that they can be successful coming here. One of the other ways that we can go ahead and try to bring more jobs here is, I think, increasing our broadband and making sure that there's the accessibility and getting the folks working from home. Working from home, folks, if they're here, and I go back to buying local, if they're here and they go out of their door and they live in Enchanted Hills, they're gonna go down to the Albertsons, and they're gonna buy groceries at the Albertsons. If they work in Albuquerque, they're gonna buy groceries on their way home, so we're gonna keep some of that revenue there, but keeping the jobs here, whether it's internet, whether they're working from home or at a local business.
Thank you. Clyde?
The... As we've talked before, that is a huge ratio of 1 to 8.5. We have way more people than we do jobs, and the way to do that is to incentivize, to get businesses here, and how do, you know, how do we have those shovel-ready things? And that's done through the city itself. The city needs to open up those choices of, do we have to reduce impact fees to be more attractive? What will bring a business out of Albuquerque? A simple printing business could come to Rio Rancho if they have an incentive to do so. Their employees are already working here, let's say. If half of their employees live in Rio Rancho already, they have happier employees because they don't have to cross the bridge. But there's also, we have to notice that, and we have to be actively searching out those businesses as well, and getting those shovel-ready lots, not converting commercial properties to residential properties, but converting commercial properties into something that's ready to be used today. Thank you.
Joshua?
Can I get the question one more time, sir?
Yes, sir. So Rio Rancho's been growing at a faster pace in Albuquerque, but at the same time, jobs have not kept pace. We now have one job per eight residents today. What would you do over the next four years to accomplish job growth?
Absolutely. I think we have a pool of people to bring in right now that are ready to build business. There's an opportunity. Each one of us are veterans. The SBA, Veterans SBA, is an opportunity to go out and get grant money to bring veteran businesses to Rio Rancho. I know for a fact, right now, there are at least two businesses that I know of that would be perfect for Rio Rancho. One, what it does is it takes plastic in any form that it is in right now and makes it recyclable and turns it into fuel, and they're actually selling the plant, so the opportunity for... There's opportunity on multiple levels. Rio Rancho can actually purchase a plant, bring jobs in for local residents, and be a producer of fuel, to be able to sell it to their fleet. They can go for the fleet or sell it as jet fuel, and those are just a few examples.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to the next question. The question that we have is around public-private partnerships. Those have been greatly successful in the state of New Mexico, even Rio Rancho in the past, and through, throughout the United States, that these public-private partnerships can help with economic development, job growth. How would you encourage these? Clyde, you're up first.
Public-private partnerships are a great tool to Public-private partnerships are a great tool to do that. And I think that's one of those things where we'd have to communicate with that private partner directly to our needs and search out that. I think the city has to actively involve in that anymore. We're seeing it more and more throughout the country, throughout cities, and we have to be engaged in that. There's certain advantages to that. The private company gets to jump some of the hurdles that a municipality would have through different processes of permitting and everything else. So we can move forward in a direction that is directed by a private and it may be able to do it quicker as a benefit to both entities. I can think of one, like a dormitory at a university where the university can't afford it. They partner up with a company that can actually go in there, build dormitories, rent those out with that public-private partnership on university land, which is tax-free. So it puts it as an advantage to both parties and I think that's what will make it successful.
Thank you. Joshua, same question.
Absolutely. I think there's a great opportunity to be had with the public-private partnerships. Again, there are neighboring cities right now that are taking advantage of the funding that's available right now. Investors are coming to New Mexico because of the type of funding that's available. And they are creating coalitions to be able to put together a great package to be able to go after a lot of funding. Right now, you know, the military AFRL are partnering with some people and the private sector to be able to bring space to that area. And we could be doing the same thing. We could be building coalitions with private-public partners and being able to put together a package to be able to bring funding and development to the city of Rio Rancho.
Thank you. Bob, same question.
You know, thanks, Jerry. Rio Rancho has been really successful in the private partnerships and public partnerships. The success rate is amazing. Rio Rancho has been voted as one of the better places to build, bring business, and to live. You know, Los Diamantes, when we start to talk a little bit about Los Diamantes, the development out there with the developer, with the schools, with the city, everyone working together to build that out there, get roads put in, get schools put in, get the infrastructure and everything put in and work together to make that community in that area stronger, just shows you the commitment that the city of Rio Rancho has, as well as the school district and the developers and everyone involved. It was a successful, they're successful projects. And we encourage them. At the city, that's something we look forward to is working with the private partnerships and developing and establishing future relationships to make Rio Rancho stronger. That's our success and that's why we're a better place to live and that's why I'm here.
Okay, thank you. All right, Joshua, the next question is going to you first. So, city of Rio Rancho has a much lower crime rate than Albuquerque does. Albuquerque's rated as one of the highest in the nation and Rio Rancho's crime rate is the best overall, lowest crime rate of all cities in the state of New Mexico. That being said, what would you do as a city councilor to ensure that that continues?
Absolutely. Being prior law enforcement myself, I understand how critical law enforcement is and all first responders. I think that we build, and as we expand Rio Rancho, we build with public safety in mind. When we're talking about our undeveloped areas that we're planning on developing, I think that we need to strategically look at positioning our law enforcement in these places to make them effective, make sure that they have access, make sure that they are capable of deterrence and just being visible. I know that there are leakage, there is leakage at the border of Rio Rancho and Albuquerque. And one thing that we can do to address that as we build out Rio Rancho and increase our law enforcement, just make sure that in those areas, they're clearly visible and can act as a deterrent to those criminals and leakers coming from the other cities.
Okay, thank you. Same question.
This is an awesome thing to talk about. I'll tell you why. Because crime rate in Rio Rancho is down 13% from last year. Crime rate is down 13%. Living next door to one of the most violent cities and our crime rate is that. And I'll tell you how we're going to continue keeping that going is we're going to keep doing what we're doing, doing it exactly how we're doing it. But what we need to do is we need to get more law enforcement officers. And because with the growth, and Clyde mentioned this earlier, with the growth, we need to have controlled growth. And what that means, and everyone here knows this, is controlled growth is we're putting all these houses. We need to make sure that we have the infrastructure, be it law enforcement, fire, there to support our growth. So we need to have the law enforcement to be able to respond to those calls and do the amazing job that they do. We have a great police force. We support the police force fully and the community supports it. And I think that's why we're so successful. That's why our crime rate's down. And that's why we're going to keep it down is because our community supports our law enforcement as well as our governing bodies.
Clyde?
One of the most critical questions tonight in that is, how do you deal with police and fire emergency first-time responders in a city that is growing like Rio Rancho is? And that is where we need to kind of focus. If we look at how the city has grown over the last five years and we just ran a straight percentage at it, we have not increased either one of those enough to compete with the houses that are going in so that we can put police officers where they need to be, firemen where they need to be, and deal with our growth. And so as that, we have to, we have to grow with our growth as far as fire and police department. And I lump them together because police is critical of keeping the crime rate down and everything else, but they go hand in hand when we're looking at what we need to do to support our citizens. And we do need, you know, pay them. We have some of the brightest and the best here in Rio Rancho and we don't need them going somewhere else for another paycheck. So we need to get more of them on the force and we need to make sure we are very competitive, if not above everybody around us. Thank you.
All right, next question. First one goes to Bob here. On March 1st, municipal election is rounding the corner and one of the topics on there is the $10 million permanent fund. Right. That being said, what's your opinion on the creation of this fund?
I agree with the creation of the fund and I'll tell you why. That money that we're going to put into that permanent fund is going to allow us to free up additional funds. You know, we've all talked about infrastructure needs. We've talked about paying law enforcement more. There's this thing out there where if we take this $10 million and we just throw it at one thing and throw it out there one time, it's like having fireworks. We're going to have the grand finale and all be done and we're not going to have anything left. With the creation of the permanent fund, what it does is it allows us to have a savings account and basically put money in that's going to keep giving us money back. And we can take the money that we earn from that every year and use it for additional road projects. We can even take that and put it into some reoccurring costs. We can't use grant funding for reoccurring funding when it comes to job creation. So we might be able to take some of that money and use it for pay or salary increases or additional road projects. It's a control and it's a great project. It's something that's going to give the citizens the right to vote for where the money goes.
Thank you. Clyde?
Permanent fund, I worked at the land office, has one of the biggest permanent funds in the state, if not the country. And I also am aware that Roswell, Chavas County has a large permanent fund. Both are very successful in generating that revenue and sustainable revenue. And I think what an admirable thing to do to say, the government is putting money aside, $10 million and we're going to grow from that. But at what point do we say that that's enough or is that a good permanent fund when we have a bunch of need in place? So it's a double-edged sword. We have roads that need repaired. We're asking voters to vote in a road bond right now and we have money available. So it's a double-edged sword. If we get a good investment on it and we pull 6% maybe on that $10 million, it's $300,000 to the corpus, $300,000 to the actual revenue stream. That's a very hopeful thought and one minute is not nearly long. Thank you very much.
I know, that's. But you were right on about the six minutes.
Yeah, thank you for the question. The permanent fund, I do agree with the permanent fund under certain stipulations. If it's used for the people of Rio Rancho and we're fiscally responsible with that money. You know, we're talking about parks, roads, and things that are being built for the people of Rio Rancho. You know, I think one of the things that we should do just to make sure that, you know, there's proper checks and balances is do a check-in, right, with the constituents of Rio Rancho. When we're talking about this permanent fund and, you know, two years, four years, hey, you know, this is what we've done. What do you like? What don't you like? Are there any suggestions? You know, should we move forward with having this permanent fund? Do you think it's effective? And get their buy-in, get their input and speak directly to them to see if it's something that is viable and they want to continue with.
So one minute was enough for you?
No. I cut it short.
All right, Clyde, you have the final question. So we're at the Chamber of Commerce today. So that being said, shop local is hugely important to this community. Give you an idea, during the pandemic, Sandoval County led the Southwest in the highest performing county of all of them. We're talking Arizona, Texas, Colorado, Utah. We were performing at a high rate of folks buying locally and buying from small businesses. That being said, how would you promote shopping and buying local? And the second part of this question is, is how will you reinforce it that the city should be buying local whenever possible?
You know, one of the reasons that Rio Rancho had that record during the, probably the most critical time we've had in our country's history is the great people that live here in Rio Rancho. They bought locally. I know we went out to eat way more than we ever did as we would drive up, get our food to go and go back and try to assist those small businesses. We tried to help every chance we could get. And I think that's the thing that we have to make the public aware and when we communicate and we get out to our communities and we actually talk to them about the importance of shopping local. And I think that is something we should definitely promote throughout the city is that awareness. It's not just, hey, buy local. Why do we buy local? Those tax dollars that are in GRT are, you know, we get those dollars to use for you locally. If you go shop in Albuquerque, those dollars don't come up the hill to us. Those dollars stay in Albuquerque. And I think that's a good awareness that we need to make everybody aware of the benefit of what they're getting from Rio Rancho and that GRT dollars, but shopping local generates that dollar. Thank you.
Thank you. Joshua?
That's a great question. I think when you talk about reinforcement, you have to walk the walk and talk the talk. You know, you have to shop and buy here locally yourself. I've been to Whiptail at least three times since it's opened, right? You know, Turtle Mountain just opened right down the street from all of us. I've been there. I frequent that one. I get my hair cut at Santi Barber Shop, which is right there in the plaza. So I think when you talk about reinforcement, I think you talk about walking the walk. And I think people see, if you lead by example, they may also follow that example as well. And then, of course, working with people like yourself, coming up with marketing plans to make sure that we're getting the message out about new businesses, what's coming. And then also making sure that, goes back to economic development and job creation, if people are working here, they're spending their dollars here and they're not traveling to Rio Rancho to work and spending their money there and then coming home.
Thank you.
I think what's been really unique and successful here is you have a county commissioner, you have mayor, you have counselors, everyone who truly believe in buying and shopping local. We're out and we're every day supporting the chamber, the businesses, and we're making sure that folks know that buying local, being here, getting all your products here, eating here, everything you can do here is done local. A lot of folks don't know that. You know, we put signs up everywhere. It's about having a great campaign and telling people what's important about buying local. And I'm a big believer in, you know, the Turtle Mountain. That's one of the businesses that we worked hard to get down there and it's a great thing and it's amazing. Now let me go to another part of the question. You said, how do we get the city to enforce buying local, get the, you know, the city to do it? You know, that's a hard, that's a hard thing to answer sometimes because that's like us getting in the middle, we can't get in the middle of purchasing. That's something we just really can't do. So it's about having the resources available here locally and making sure that the city knows that those resources are there and we can purchase them. That's what's really important, making sure that the resources are known by the city.
Thank you. All right, so that concludes all the questions that we had planned for today. So we will go to closing statements. So Joshua, you're up first this go around.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you, Jerry. Thank you to Rio Rancho Chamber of Commerce for giving us the opportunity to have this important discussion. Also, thank you to my opponents for being here and taking the time to share your vision with Rio Rancho. For the people viewing here, I just want you to know and to leave you with this. I believe in collaboration and engaging the people and I'm ready to work with anybody that's looking to move Rio Rancho for regardless of party. You know, as I was taught in the military, you know, we are stronger together when we work together. And, you know, there's another mentality, you know, we need to have a, you know, really aggressive, we needed done yesterday type of mentality to bring that to its people. And, you know, that's why I'm running for city council. My name is Joshua Jones. I'm running for city council in District 3 and I humbly ask you for your support. Thank you.
All right, one minute. Clyde?
Oh, it wasn't two minutes?
Oh, two minutes, I'm sorry.
Oh, that was one minute for them.
That was one minute.
Sure.
We're, yeah, we got a little confused.
No worries.
You're right.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Hi. Once again, thank you for this opportunity. You know, we look at how we do things and what should be done and why three people would actually throw their hat in the ring to go around and knock on doors. Some people probably would call us insane and say that they would never do that. But the reason is, the three of us have served, actually put our lives on the line for everybody in this country. But today we're asking for your vote and I think Rio Rancho is great because of you, the citizens, that have voted on things, that have worked to improve Rio Rancho, whether we're buying locally or looking to the future of what business is coming to us. I think it's important that we all look at Rio Rancho as a whole and that even though we're District 3 and we want to represent you in that district, we're always looking at what Rio Rancho can do in the future. We're more than just a bedroom community attached to Albuquerque. If you look at our size and we've been, today we've talked about comparing it to Farmington, we're much bigger than Farmington and yet we're still missing some of the basic amenities of a mall and restaurants that are five-star or four-star. We're looking at what can we do to be better? And I think it's up to us to spawn economic development and look at the things that we can do to get out of the way of economic development along the job front so that we bring jobs to Rio Rancho. That's where we need to be. Our focus needs to be on. We have to change that ratio where 75% of our people are leaving Rio Rancho to go to work. They need jobs here where they can work, play, and enjoy their hometown and not be that city outside of Rio Rancho. And the other thing that I like to bring up is the candidates. We all have a choice, you know, and we're all here to represent you. But a good choice for a candidate is, I was in scouting for many years and there's 12 points of the scout law that every candidate should actually follow and that's to be trustworthy, loyal, helpful, friendly, courteous, kind, obedient, cheerful, thrifty, brave, clean, and reverent. So if we keep that in mind, we can serve you. Thank you very much.
Bob? Thank you, Jerry. Again, thanks. Thank you to everyone here. I really appreciate it. And most of all, I want to thank the citizens of Rio Rancho. You know, I've been on city council now going on four years. Before that, I was in planning and zoning for three and a half years. I take great pride in serving the citizens of Rio Rancho. You know, we have a great community when it comes to our school district. We have some of the best athletes when it comes to our schools and our kids. We have some of the brightest students around. We have some of the most hardest-working folks here in the city of Rio Rancho. And I take a lot of pride in serving each and every one of them. You know, when you serve in District 3, that's just a number. You're actually serving the entire community. And I want to tell everyone, it's really important to understand that the governing body, everyone that's in place right now works day in and day out to serve you and make sure that you get what you need. There's always going to be times when somebody feels that they should have gotten something that they didn't get. But that's when we need to work together and work harder and make sure that everyone gets what they feel they need to have to be successful and live in a great city of Rio Rancho. The city of Rio Rancho is an amazing place, our law enforcement, our fire, again, and our citizens. I want to get, I want to leave with this. Some of my top priorities going forward are going to be community growth, water reliability, support of the first responders and education, and ensuring that small business have a place right here in Rio Rancho, attracting new business and quality of life centers. Those are things that are going to be important to me going forward. And I think that we can get all of those done. And I think that we can get all of those done. That's a, that's a big list, but it's something that I really want to tackle and be successful at. Because if I'm successful and I do get elected, then every one of us are successful. And each one of these gentlemen sitting next to me can sit there and be proud of what we accomplished. Because it doesn't matter, right now at this point, we're all citizens together. And if I'm successful, everyone in this room is. So again, I'm Bob Tyler and I ask you for your vote. And I thank each and every one of you for being a resident of Rio Rancho and making us a successful, great community.
Okay, on behalf of all the candidates and the Rio Rancho Regional Chamber, we want to thank you all for joining us today. And make sure that you get out there, March 1st and vote. Matter of fact, early voting is already happening right now. So get out there and vote. Express your views and your point of view. But most importantly, the only way you can do that is getting out there and vote. So thank you.